Like to call this school board work session to order, the time is now 5:30 PM. School board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment, so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Mrs. Poland, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Julian?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
We have corn.
Thank you. Tonight's agenda, Mrs. Dillard and Ms. Gillum, student dis- Ms. Dillard, Student Discipline Policy Specialist, along with Administration and Mrs. Gillum and Board members will work to finalize the personal electronic devices policy. And with that, Ms. Gillum and Ms. Dillard, I will turn it over to you guys.
Okay. Thank you, President Burnett and Board. We're here tonight to talk about personal electronic devices. We're gonna, we have slides that are in the agenda. We have some policies in the agenda which represent our current policies. And then we have a draft policy and administrative regulation to review with you. I'm gonna go over, we're gonna go over current policies, some supporting evidence driving this initiative to look at cell phones and personal devices in schools and some access to and use of language around how that's being monitored in schools. We're gonna look at current school district practices. So schools do have rules internally that they have been utilizing to, for cell phones and other personal devices. We did a staff survey that we're gonna go over. And then I'm gonna give a summary of policy committee feedback that we received for this policy. I would ask that you save questions for the end. I think Ms. Gillum and I are just gonna go through the slides. And at the end, there will be time for questions. And then we'll go through, we'll pull up the policy and go through the policy together. And same with the administrative regulation. So our current policies are in the agenda packet. As I said, this is encompassed in Section 804, which is mobile learning devices. Our policy addresses both personal and district devices together. We are not keeping this content together in the new policy. District devices will be addressed separately, and I'll touch on that just a little bit. So 804.1 is a purpose statement. 804.2 is the policy. You'll see some of that language in that policy did make it over into our draft policy. The conditions, however, are quite broad. Essentially, the policy says, in the school setting, mobile learning devices are permitted when their use is consistent with this policy and does not interfere with the educational process or with safety and security. So it's quite broad. 804.3 goes into prohibited conduct. And we did use that information in our draft policy on prohibited conduct. As far as searches, that was under 804.4. I did not include that in the agenda packet. That has actually already been archived because it was replaced by our new search and seizure administrative regulation that came out last year. And the new administrative regulation on search and seizure outlines the procedures for the search of personal devices, what that looks like, and also school devices. So essentially, with school devices, there is no expectation of privacy. And with cell phones, it's pretty prescriptive. And if it comes up at some point, we can go over that search and seizure administrative regulation, since it pertains to cell phones so closely. It's also linked in, in the policy documents themselves. We already have currently policies that address district devices and district technology. So we have a whole Section 802 that's on student use and technology. We have user agreements on district technology. Section 803 goes into digital citizenship and internet safety. Both of those have been, I've been looking at those because they'll be incorporated into an ASB model policy, which is gonna be 61, 61.4 district internet and technology. I just say all this to let you know that we don't have any concerns about the fact that moving forward with this policy, we're not gonna be addressing district devices. So the first review of this policy goes back to our need to update that search and seizure. If you remember going back about a year, our search and seizure language pretty much established that if there's reasonable suspicion, you can search devices. And that legal guidance was that you, it doesn't work that way. You can't do that. So we updated the AR, but that, search and seizure AR. But that is why we first started looking at this policy, in addition to just looking at the review of all of the ASB model policies and how we're moving over to that platform. The ASB model policy is 5138, and it's called portable electronic devices. ASB does provide prescriptive conditions of use that align with the district's recommendations that you're gonna see today. We did not copy the ASB model policy. We used it as a guide, and we took some things from it. But our policy is not, not like the ASB model policy. Additional factors in looking at this revision, the district is receiving feedback from stakeholders about the need to minimize the negative impact of cell phones in classrooms. This includes staff, community partners, and families. And we'll go into that further in some of the, some of the upcoming slides. From one parent, we heard that their student was picking up their phone over 100 times a day. That was an email that we got. That parent hoped for a collaborative approach to dealing with this issue, as the parent assumed that this was not an isolated issue. The negative impact of cell phones in schools is a hot topic in education research and literature. We will discuss how this conversation is happening at the state level in upcoming slides. As far as research goes, a good example is John Hattie's meta-analysis research, which can be found on Visible Learning Meta-X. He's pretty well-known in education circles. His meta-analysis of 144 studies on the presence of mobile phones in classrooms found that they are likely to have a negative impact on student learning with a negative effect size of negative point two four. And that was, those 144 studies covered 350,000 students. The goal is to have consistent and clear limitation on access to and use of personal electronic devices during the school day.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. In this next section, find my right spot. In this next section, we'll talk about supporting evidence to making this change. As Ms. Dillard said, we've heard feedback from stakeholders across the board in terms of students, parents, educators, of needing to look at this policy again. And so in this next section, we'll look at both national and then local to our school district evidence that we've found in support of making a change. First, in terms of national data, these are some of the statistics that you can see in one of the accompanying documents that was in your board packet for today. That comes from the phone-free schools movement. So referencing that 97% of students use an average of 43 minutes per school day on their phone, primarily with social media and gaming. We don't have any local data for that, but anecdotally, we could share that, especially at the high school level, you can observe that students are on their phone multiple times throughout the school day. 72% of high school teachers report cell phones are a major distraction in the classroom. Additionally, 83% of teachers support an all-day phone-free policy. That came from NEA Today, published a survey of over 2,000 of their members who supported the all-day phone-free policy, not just during instructional time. Notifications, 50% of students get, or kids get 237 notifications per day, and some students receive as many as 4,500 notifications every day, 23% of those during the school day. And studies show that just having your phone on your person lowers test scores due to part of your brain waiting for a notification. Mental health, 95% of teachers say anxiety and depression is a problem in public K-12 schools. Since 2010, there has been over a 100% increase in anxiety and depression in children and teens, and the evidence shows direct correlations to the use of social media and screen time. Again, in your packet, there were a few pages from the phone-free schools movement. They offer an administrator toolkit for implementing a phone-free school policy. And so some of the other benefits that they highlighted in terms of a phone-free policy is the correlation that we may see between distractions and engagement. So a benefit of a phone-free policy is increased engagement both in and out of the classroom for students. Additionally, it mentions increased teacher morale and retention. Currently, much of the enforcement of our current policy, especially at the high school level, is the responsibility of teachers. So that's a constant battle that can happen between students and phones in the classroom. And so having a consistent policy across our district that is enforced would be a benefit for teachers as well. Next, in, I think this, yes, in fall of 2024, in September, there was a resolution published and then passed in October by the Alaska State Board of Education that was calling for the development of a comprehensive model policy to be written by deed prohibiting the use of cellular phones and other electronic communication devices during class hours, except in cases of emergency. And then, of course, today, House Bill 57, which started as a wireless telecommunications device policy in the House. It has had a number of other items added to it, but that same language and intent did pass the Senate today. Some key points from that are that it's, you know, looking to have school districts develop policies regarding the use of telecommunication devices during regular school hours, including lunch and passing periods, as mentioned in the policy. And then noting that if a district's policy prohibits the use of that, that it must allow exceptions for students to use a device for medical or translation purposes, which we have addressed in our policy, and then also in the event of an emergency. It also does allow for granting permission for the use of devices for educational purposes. The next data point is a more local data point. So this is our school climate survey data from last year regarding cyberbullying. Unfortunately, when we pull our data, discipline data or school-level behavior logs, we don't have a subcategory for cyberbullying. We only have bullying and harassment. So we can't pull specific data relating to this. But in terms of the school climate survey, 27.5% of parents agreed or strongly agreed that cyberbullying was a problem among students in the school. 54.7% of students agreed, and 58.5% of staff agreed. Last year, there were 209 bullying or harassment violations at the district level. Those would be from the, from the data dashboard where you can see both in-school and out-of-school suspensions, most of those being made at the middle and high school level. When we can pull and look at data from school-level behaviors, so not suspensions, but other school-level interventions, since 2023, there were 121 incidents of bullying, and those identified were mostly at the elementary level, since they're the primary users of those school-level interventions. Also, in terms of Title IX and EEO, since 2019, as we've been logging those cases, there's been about 600 total. And approximately 10% of those Title IX EEO cases were directly related to sexual or discriminatory, discriminatory harassment that was happening on cell phones. So texts, videos, social media, et cetera, while under school authority. One, one topic that we wanna directly address because it came up during policy committee and consistently comes up as an area that is a concern when implementing a school-wide phone-free policy is related to safety and emergency considerations. It's the primary concern that I think we've heard from parents against cellphone restrictions is that they want their students to have access to their cellphone in the case of an emergency. Also, when I met with Regional Student Council this fall, that was a concern that they brought up as well, that in a, in case of an emergency, they also want to be able to get in contact with their parents. In our policy, you'll see that we reference specifically our district communication tools as the way that we can send information to families. Also, at the high school level, we're able to send information to students through that ParentSquare platform as well. A couple areas of when we discussed with policy committee about emergency situations is that anecdotally, there's not a lot of hard data that comes out of unfortunate crisis and emergency situations, but there is certainly experience information that comes from that. So distraction from emergency instructions, student use of cell phones during an unfolding emergency can distract their attention from safety and emergency response directions being given by school staff. They can interfere with emergency response. Cellphone use by students can impede public safety response by accelerating parental and community arrival at the scene of an emergency during times when officials may be attempting to evacuate students to another site. It also can cause a communication system overload, so victims and worried family members trying to get through can jam communications interfering with first responders and school personnel. And it can also cause misinformation. So cellphone use by students can quickly spread incorrect information, hamper rumor control, and in doing so, disrupt and delay effective public safety personnel response. We've also spent a lot of time with principals as we've been working through drafting this policy in AR. And so we've been able to get feedback from them in lots of different ways. One example came from a Lathrop administrator recently of, you know, kind of two different situations. One where there wasn't a district provided information, or they weren't, you know, previously able to put quickly communication out. And the difference between that situation and a more recent situation where they were able to get information out quickly, and it really helped with rumors and putting people at ease regarding the situation that was happening. The next one, in terms of our ability and how parents feel of how we are able to communicate during emergency, this is again last year's school climate survey. So again, parent feedback, 90% of parents agreed that the school notifies parents or guardians effectively in the case of a school-wide emergency. 87% of parents agreed that the school takes effective measures to ensure the safety of students. And 92% agreed that the school has made it clear to my child what he or she should do if there is an emergency during the school day, which all of that just speaks to our ability to train student staff and effectively communicate in the event of an emergency situation. There was also in the survey that we did with staff, a high response rate from staff acknowledging the interference that cell phones can present during emergencies, and they were in support of limiting cellphone access, even given the sensitive nature of this topic. Next, we'll talk about our district practices that we have in place right now, and then also the results of a recent staff survey that Ms. Dillard sent to principals to distribute to staff, where we tried to collect some feedback from them in anticipation of this presentation as well. So first, we'll talk about current school-level practices. Elementary schools are consistent, both within and across sites, really, in terms of their approach to cell phones. They are off and in backpacks, cubbies, or lockers for the duration of the school day. Middle schools are consistent in their enforcement of the policies, but there are some mix of school-site policies. So it's a mix of either off and in your locker or off and out of sight at our middle schools. High schools, there is much more variance between schools, all the way from off and out of sight to no school-wide policy or allowing teacher discretion on cell phones in classrooms. High schools have similar policies between sites. However, the feedback from teachers was much more variable, ranging from that no school-wide policy to teacher discretion to off and in your lockers. And so we acknowledge that while there is a stated policy, there may not be a clear understanding at schools. And as we'll see later, there is not consistent enforcement. Students expressed this exact same thing when I met with them at the Region Six Student Government meeting, that the school may have policies, the teacher may have policies, but they don't enforce them, and it's difficult for them to know what the expectations are when they vary so widely from classroom to classroom. Having even a school-wide policy is newer at some of our high schools. However, the topic of cell phones, I think, has been around for a really long time. When we've asked schools about the number of infractions of students not following the school-wide rule of, you know, especially at the middle school of that it's in your locker for the day, with the data that we were able to collect consistently, first-time infraction numbers are high, and then, however, they decrease substantially after the first time a parent has to come and pick up the phone from the school. So for example, at Tannenaw, they gave us during semester one, they had 58 first-time infractions, and then eight second infractions, two third infractions, and no fourth or fifth infractions. And while we didn't have consistent data across sites to compare, that was a similar trend we saw across schools. Generally, schools have progressive consequences, starting with a warning for a student, and then leave it in the office for the rest of the day. Student can pick it up. If it happens again, a parent pick up, and so on from there. Next, we'll go into the feedback that we got from staff relating to school cell phones. So we'll start, the survey was sent to principals to distribute to all their staff. When we collected this data, there were 205 responses, 74 elementary, 96 middle, and 54, 54 high. Some of those respondents did check both elementary and middle for our K-8 schools. The first question that we'll look at in all of these grade bands is regarding the current policy. So what best describes your school's policy on cell phones, well, in the classroom? The second question we'll address is distraction. So to what level are personal cell phones a distraction in your school classroom? They could choose from one to five, with one being not at all and five being a daily distraction. Next, we'll talk about enforcement. Given your prior responses, are these school-wide restrictions on cell phones, personal electronic devices enforced by the staff? And that was yes, no, or inconsistently. And then policy preference. So of the following, what would be your preference for a cellphone policy in classrooms? We'll see some trends as we look through this data. In elementary, what we can see is that there is a good understanding and consistent policy across elementary schools with very high consistent enforcement. So 86% of staff reported that is consistently enforced. The correlating data point that I wanna draw to your attention is that only 5% of respondents said that cell phones were a high distraction in their class. And then over 90% of respondents had a policy preference at the elementary level of keeping cell phones off and in backpack or locker. The next group was with our middle schools, and here it becomes a little bit, little bit more, less of a clear correlation because it's kind of a mixed response at schools. So 70% of respondents said that their current policy is off and in your locker. So this comes back to that point of, while it is consistent across the site that they have a policy, there is variance between our schools. Here, 51% of respondents said that there was consistent enforcement, so just over half. And then if we look at the distraction data, we can see that 33% of respondents said that it was a high level of distractions in classrooms. So again, we see this connection between distraction and enforcement. And then 77% of respondents had a policy preference of off and in your locker for middle schools. For high school, we can see the current policy, only 43% had kind of the same answer, that it was off and out of sight, so still allowing it on students' person. But 26.5% of respondents said that there was no school-wide policy. Here, we see with only 9% of consistent enforcement, we also see 84% stating that it was a high level of distractions in classrooms. And regarding policy preference, 57% said that off and in your locker would be the policy preference, so just over half going with that response. There were some other areas of feedback that we did also gain from the survey. All three groups had a 95% or higher response to wondering if there would be restrictions and looking for restrictions on all devices, so including smartwatches, earbuds. They were identified as also being a distraction. Also, passing periods, this was a topic that came up in policy committee as well. 28% of respondents at the high school level want cellphone use or access during passing periods restricted. However, not all respondents answered that question. 85% of middle school respondents agreed with restricting cell phones during passing periods. We are concerned about allowing phones during passing periods, as this provides an opportunity for students to gain access to their phones during the day, which could then put a greater burden on teachers to enforce that policy if students are using their phones during passing period. Also, a concern that it gives a mixed message to students about why we're putting a cellphone policy in place, if it's not, certainly for engagement and maximizing instructional time, but also for the acknowledgement of the distraction that they pose and the other harms that they can do. So we just wanted to acknowledge that. This next one is just a quote from the survey that we thought was a representative of a lot of other quotes that kind of mirrored this statement, that they are a huge distraction in our classrooms right now. Some other topics that were addressed and reviewed in the survey were safety. There was a high percentage of respondents that mentioned the issues listed under number one, so cyberbullying, emergency situations, access to and sharing inappropriate content, student-staff privacy issues, and peer conflict, that stated that those were a concern for them. Additional comments also included students coordinating meetups for fights, vaping in bathrooms, relationships that may be meetups, and then other discipline-related concerns. Mental health was another topic that we brought up, and also one that we highlighted in the nation, in the national data point. So a high percentage of respondents mentioned those issues, number two, as being a concern. And then earlier this year, in one of our CTE stakeholder meetings, it was brought up from CTE stakeholders, both industry partners and local employers in our community, that students are not prepared to self-monitor regarding their device usage when coming on board with organizations or going into the workplace. They specifically mentioned both cell phones and earbuds as a concern that they often have to address with students, that they're not able to understand the nature of being in a professional position and not being able to have your earbuds in or be on your cellphone all the time.
So based on the feedback, we did look at a couple of allowances for cell phones. These are gonna be exceptions for documented needs and for instructional use. Under documented needs, and this would be in our draft policy, House Bill 57 identified medical necessity and translation service needs as something that they wanted policy to address as an exception. We also received survey responses and policy committee feedback on the need for medical necessity. So that was a pretty consistent theme. That was something that we had in our draft policy early on. Regarding translation services, per our multilingual program, we do assign devices for translation. So I think it would be, what I'm hearing is a personal device would be a last resort. However, since it is in House Bill 57, we wanted to include it in the policy, and there might be a chance that a multilingual program plan for a student might require something like a personal device for translation services. As far as instructional application, and that language is gonna be in our draft admin- and that language is going to be in our draft administrative regulation, teachers do sometimes incorporate student devices into specific instructional activities. And so, we heard about 10% of middle school staff responded that they do, even on a rare occasion, incorporate personal devices for instructional purposes. And high schools, student or high school staff, about 36%. For example, we heard that some CTE classes use cellphones as diagnostic tools. So that was one example. One teacher mentioned, and this was actually feedback that I received from a principal who had spoke to the staff at his high school. One teacher mentioned using cellphones to take pictures of items through a microscope. Other teachers have students use their phones to record videos that may be used as part of a group assignment. So these examples are very specific to the use of camera or video recording capacity, something that our Chromebooks would not be able to do as far as what we offer for devices. But we do want to acknowledge that this is an area that could potentially produce inconsistent enforcement of this policy. And this is some feedback that we've been hearing a little bit more of from administrators, just in the last couple of days as we talk about this. So we are aware that we will need to provide additional guidance on what types of activities should be approved. And that is why we put in that preapproval by the building administrator is required language to ensure the need cannot be met in some other way and to ensure consistency. And finally, the survey showed us that staff who responded overwhelmingly believe that a district-level policy will support them, ensure consistent enforcement and accountability, and clearly communicate expectations to all stakeholders. So we have two quotes here. A district-wide policy that is consistent and implemented on at all campuses has the potential to be impactful, even a game changer. And so, there were a lot of responses that presented similar sentiment. Finally, for Policy Committee, we did take this policy to two different policy committees. Why two? Because in that initial draft, we did attempt to keep district devices and personal devices together, like is in our current policy. And it was admittedly confusing. And we got that feedback after the first Policy Committee and made some edits to that from there. But we've incorporated feedback into our final drafts here. A lot of the content that we've already discussed. There's emergencies in the form of parent being concerned about wanting to be able to get ahold of their kid in an emergency or their kid being able to call out an emergency. On the flip side, for staff, they recognize that it can hinder emergency response. There were questions around the reasonable care language that's in the policy, and what is reasonable care? So if we're confiscating a device and we're holding that device, what does reasonable care mean? It is essentially a legal term, that it's what a reasonable person would do. What we do when we take a device in the district is we are going to store it and lock it up in the office or a safe. We're not going to be asking teachers to take devices. So this is something that's going to be between students and a safety in the office or students and the office. Medical needs, we talked about that. As far as consistency, really, just whatever we do, please don't send our kids mixed messages, whether it be about instructional purposes, conditions of use, class-to-class, school-to-school, grade-to-grade. And then, for high school-specific, and this goes back into the conversation about passing periods too, but just the acknowledgement that high school students have more responsibilities, whether it be over younger siblings or employment or after-school activities. And so, we need to balance their needs, the reality of their needs, and the need to manage this as a problem.
Next, we want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about this policy with you today. It certainly is an important policy. And unlike some of the policies or many of the policies that we bring to you, there isn't an easy, everyone-agrees, clear-cut answer. This is what we have to do. We want to acknowledge that it is a very divided topic. In talking with students, we hear students who are appreciative of strict cellphone enforcement to allow themselves to kind of detach from their phone. And then, also, students who very firmly need their phone with them at all times. We hear from parents who are asking us to separate students from their phones and to have a, you know, more restrictive cellphone policy. And then, we also hear from parents who don't want us to take their phone because they do want that immediate ability to communicate with their students. The one stakeholder group, I would acknowledge, that we don't hear a divided answer from, though, is educators. From all of our educators, from administrators to teachers to support staff, all educators agree that there needs to be a consistent, more restrictive policy for cellphones. So we just want to thank you for letting us talk to you more about this and provide the context because we do feel it's a really important policy. We also want to acknowledge that, especially at the high school level, this would be a big change for them. This would be a big change for high school students and high school staff. And so, we've started talking about, you know, proactively, if there is a new policy brought forward, that we would want to make sure that we're providing proactive summer communication to all staff and families regarding the policy and AR and what that will look like in schools. We would prepare a presentation for principals, both to give to principals and then also for them to take to their staff to talk about it. Ms. Dillard would create a presentation to give to students during extension time about the policy and the enforcement of it. We would help principals make sure they have their plans in place of how are you going to handle this? What will your tracking system look like? How will you be enforcing it and violations? What does your documentation system look like? So everything they have now, but just kind of in a more systematic way to make sure that we're all on the same page and it is that consistent message across the district. We also want to acknowledge that we would give resources for, you know, from our Student Support Services Department for counselors to talk with students about what it may be like to not be with your phone all day or other supports that they might need.
I think with that, we'll probably see what questions you might have in regards to the presentation, if any, and then we'll start digging into policy. Ms. Maple.
We're doing so much work on this since Policy Committee met on it. We just, like, created lots more questions and lots more to do. I had one comment, two questions. One of the things that came up was about, oh, no, I should have written down the slide, the number slide that you were on. Oh, about safety in emergencies. And I know that when we looked at it the first time, one of the things that we talked about and that I did just some digging on afterwards was the difference in emotional security versus safety. And that it seems like that's the big defining factor there, is that having a phone during emergency might make somebody feel more secure, but that does not actually mean that it is a safer environment because of it, which might be helpful in messaging, since that is what we hear from parents a lot. And then, my two questions were, did we decide that all, like, do smartwatches fall in this category? And then, a bigger question about instructional application. So are smartwatches included in this? Yes. Okay. Bigger, broader question just about instructor, or maybe this waits till we, like, really dig into the policy itself. Stop me if it should, is about the instructional application. I remember that coming up during Policy Committee. And I don't know if we talked about this piece of it then or not, but what just struck me was that it was even potentially in middle schools and that that seems like a really big equity issue, that like, not all middle schoolers, not all high schoolers have phones. Most of them do at this point. But, and I mean, I guess that that is just dealt with on a case-by-case basis, but I thought maybe it warranted conversation.
I would say, Ms. Maple, that we agree with you that it is an equity issue if it's a requirement for that. And I think that that's something that schools have struggled with over, you know, the years since cellphones have been around in terms of, you know, you can't require it. We do provide a one-to-one device. And so, I would say that teachers traditionally use their professional judgment in acknowledging that if I am going to require this, it can't be for everyone because not everyone may have it. So how, you know, I think that goes back to the question of how would I be leveraging the advice in a specific way for this instructional activity? But that was certainly some of the feedback we got from administrators too with that language. Dr. Minat.
I also think with a consistent policy, this will help that equity issue. And then, the preapproval of instructors working with their administrator and saying, "This is the reason why I would like students to use their personal devices," will also help that because it's not only the teacher making that judgment call, but the administration weighing in on the use of it and whether it's appropriate for that classroom.
Mr. Dorn.
Thank you. Just on the safety in emergency, that's Slide 9. I made a note about, and I can't remember what their official name is, but the Sandy Hook Parent Group might be a resource in addressing the emergency issues. I've heard some of their presentations on that. Why they're not, so they may have some good talking points for that campaign. And I also made another bullet there because sometimes, especially with some of the new stuff, identification of location. So again, along those lines of it may feel safe, but it's really not because it dips below. Question on the last slide, 20. When you were talking about reasonable care and that teachers wouldn't really be taking the phones, they would be stored in the office. And I'm just thinking in terms of the logistics of that. And again, I know a lot of these are in process, but I'm thinking, okay, if it happens in the classroom, the teacher's the one who's going to take it. If they send the kid down, could be gone for, could be gone. But just in terms of that logistic piece.
Mr. Dorn, thanks so much for that question. So currently, what our schools do, many schools have a process where they have a pass system, where if a student violates the cellphone policy. I hear what you're saying, that's not what's been happening. But they'll issue the student a pass to say, "Student needs to turn their phone into the office." They'll send the student down to the office, give the office a call to expect the student. And then, they'll know if the student doesn't arrive with the phone that they need to go look for that student to see where they may have gone to so they can turn their phone over. There's also some situations where safety assistants will go, have that, you know, take the custody of the phone, either with the student to bring them down to the office to turn it in, or have that direct line of the safety assistant will take it directly to the office to turn it in.
Follow-up. Thank you very much for that. I'm very interested in the realistic implementations of it. And maybe just as it continues the conversation, keeping in mind that my first thought, well, that's added distraction, loss of class time. So how that works. Maybe once they get the message, it doesn't happen again, so. Okay, thank you. And put me back in the key.
Mr. Burgess and then Mrs. Hardy.
Thanks. Kind of following on the theme of logistics here, I was actually wondering on the instructional use. I had a similar question about equity, but I'm also just thinking about logistics. If students are not supposed to be accessing their phones or they're in their lockers for certain classes, but then they have to go retrieve them for a particular class or maybe a particular lesson during class, I'm just wondering if that's going to lead to loss of class time from students running back and forth or forgetting their materials, their phones, or, you know, things like that. Have you put any thought into the logistics there? Or how do you expect that to work?
Yeah, I think it's hard to think through every situation in advance. You know, if I were to talk about it with a teacher, my recommendation would be to send a message to parents and to students in advance to say tomorrow or on Friday during our lesson, we're going to be, have an opportunity for students to use a personal device to capture images or recordings. That will be a part of a project. I would make sure the teacher had a caveat in there for if your student doesn't have a personal device or doesn't bring it to school, there will be no penalty. This is how we will manage that. So it would be that advanced notice, so students would know to bring it to that class in advance if they have it, and then work from there. Of course, nothing, you know, everything can work out really well in theory. It's in the implementation of it. And so, that's the process that I'm sure will evolve over time as we work through situations that may or may not play out as favorably as we would like it to or have to relook at that language.
And I would just like to add that this happened with me. I have a middle school student. And earlier this year, I got an email from that teacher asking if my student, if my student had a cellphone, if he could bring it to class for an activity. I really wish I could remember what that activity was, but I can't remember. But I had experienced that, you know, kind of in the middle of us having this conversation.
Thanks. I mean, that's helpful. I know that, you know, my own personal experience as a student, not that I had cellphones or that it was such an issue at the time, but it doesn't matter how many reminders I would get. I would forget that phone. That's just me. I'll pause there and come back. Thanks.
Mrs. Hardy and then Mrs. Dulean.
And mine is more about the thing a cellphone has replaced, which would be cameras. Like, I don't carry a separate camera. So what about things like field trips or airband or moments that students would want to capture those memories? Like, I know I brought cameras. I still have those photos from high school. So how are we addressing instances like that?
My thought would be the same as, you know, what the language is there within administrator preapproval. What I'm also hearing you say is that we might need to make sure we make administrators aware that in the situation of, you know, a school event, a pep assembly, or something like that where students may want to capture photos. I'm also wondering, as I'm thinking through this on the fly, of what it could look like to have a repository of photos that are taken by yearbook or some other, you know, a school-sponsored group that could be available to students so they could access those in some way as well. So we can certainly address that in some way. Mrs. Dulean.
I said I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I do want to speak up about something that I was hesitant on, and that was more on the AR. But I want to bring it up before we get into that, which is that I was surprised that we're going to let students use their devices at all in the high school level. I understand that reality is different now and students have responsibilities and jobs and younger siblings and might want to. But you just said in the beginning of this presentation that anxiety in our youth has gone up 100%. There is bullying. There is addiction of devices. Why wouldn't we, as a district, take a bold move to remove them all and give students the best opportunity that they can to figure out how to navigate this world without their devices right there? And I'm just thinking, if I, I'm thinking of my friends' children who are in high school. Lunchtime is going, it's just going to look like this. It's just going to look like that. And I really, I understand that it might drive people off-campus, but that's an addiction. Our students are addicted to this. The emails that we received were indicative of that. And I'm just, I would prefer if we would take, if we were a little bit bolder for high school. But the rest of the policy, I think, is fine, is written.
I think the board can certainly move.
Infraction.
That's hilarious. So the board can certainly move in that direction. Our thinking around it is twofold. One, you hit on open campus at high schools. Many of our students do take advantage of open campus. There's no way to regulate phone usage when students go off-campus. And I do think that would drive more students off-campus if they knew on-campus they weren't able to use their phones. And in my mind, it's great to keep students on-campus as much as possible. And also, a lot of the model policies and recommendations that we're seeing is allowing students some controlled use during the day. This is something that students, even in their student life, need to know how to work with and control the usage of their devices. And so, what a better place to do that is in schools. And then, obviously, when they become adults, they're going to have to self-regulate the use of phones as well. And so, lunchtime could be one of those instances where... use of phones as well. And so lunchtime could be one of those instances where, you know, it is a controlled environment of sorts. And then, you know, as they're coming out of lunch, it goes back in their locker and they go, you know, back to their classrooms. With that said, if the board wants to take a more stricter approach to that, this is the board's policy. And, you know, we welcome that if that's the, the board's will.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Well, thank you for all of this. I think it was very thorough and you covered a lot of ground. I'm assuming you've read The Anxious Generation. I've listened to it probably, I don't know, four or five times. And I'm, I'm absolutely astounded by what's happening to our youth because of this. It is, it, it is, it's terrible what's happening to kids. They are addicted to it. And when you take it away, everybody laughs at these videos, you know? Dad goes in and unplugs the machine and the kid goes, "Ah, what are you doing?" And they run all over. And they're, they go crazy. That's not a joke. It really isn't. I've seen it in action and you just go, whoa, we need to take a couple steps back. If we take the steps back, it's going to help the parents take the steps back because the kids are ruling the world here on this thing. And I keep telling parents that I know, you've got the power. You control this, you control them. Because this is the power. It wasn't the power when my kids were young. We didn't even have, well, okay, we didn't even have these things when I was, when I was raising children. Sorry. Addiction is a serious thing. I'm watching a fifth grader right now spin out because her cellphone has been locked down and she is trying everything she can do to manipulate and maneuver. And I, it's just kind of frightening. So I'm very concerned about the addiction factor of these things. Attention fragmentation, sleep deprivation, we can't control the sleep deprivation, but that's real. And social deprivation. And what Ms. Dulean said, lunchtime's going to be just like this. It's same thing when you walk into a restaurant and you look around and mom and dad are on their phones, kids are on their phones, nobody's talking, nobody's interacting. It, 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 it just breaks my heart. I, I understand that, that, that this is a tool. And I understand we need to teach students responsible use of the phone. And I will tell you, as an employer, I'm not going to fight that. I'm going to, you're going to fail fast and bye-bye. I'm going to try the next person because I don't have time to break your habit. So we want to try to, you know, and I'm good with letting them use it in the classroom and if they need it for, you know, functions and trig and whatever all they're doing or research or whatever it is, I, I think that's a great thing. But I want to see this used as a tool and help them get away from the social media and all of the things that are, that book is so powerful. I, I want to encourage everybody to read The Anxious Generation. If you haven't read it, please get it and read it. You can download it. You can buy the book. I mean, I'm not, I don't get any kickbacks on that, by the way. I just think it's super powerful because he talks so, in such depth about what's happening to the boys and what's happening to the girls. And it's not the same thing, but it's all based on this device. And you can see the changes. You talk, you know, you've got in here that loneliness has doubled since 2012. Well, when everybody's doing this, nobody's talking to each other. We have no friends anymore. We think we have friends, but friendship is different. It's communication and it's, it's relationship. And typing and all of that, there's no relationship. Anyway, I could go on for hours. I won't, but I absolutely love what we're doing. And thank you again for addressing this. And thank you for bringing forth all of the, the statistics and the data. It's, you've done a great job and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Before we move on to another round of questions, I'm going to throw myself in, not because I have a question, just kind of a couple of comments. So I have three kids. All three kids have devices. And this discussion actually came up at my house this afternoon before I left to come here. Because my son was like, really? Another school board meeting? You can't come to, you know, what I have going on tonight? And I said, yeah, I got it. Well, what is your board meeting about? And I told him, you know, it's doing the cell phones. And he immediately got irate and was so angry. Mom, you can't do that. And listed all these reasons why, right? Right? He's 16. The reasons were great. Some of them made sense. The other ones, I'm going, seriously, kid, stop. But then I broke it down for him with what we do at home. When they get home from school or when they have chores to do or when there's something happening, what I make them do with their phones. Like, when it's bedtime, what do I make you do? Why you make me put my phone away? Yeah. When you have chores, what do I make you do? Why you make me put my phone away? Exactly. I said, this is not any different than that. This is, you need to pay attention to school and what's going on there. And so you're putting your phone away for your class so that you can get good grades and learn what your teachers are trying to teach you. And he understood, right? Didn't make him any less mad. He was still, well, I don't like it. But it calmed him down. And so he, he kind of got why we were doing this. You know, and it also brings up, we had the conversation on misinformation and things that happen in our schools. And we've all seen the Facebook posts. We've all seen them. All the things that come out in the posts and this person says that, this person says that, and none of which, any of was true. So things like that can be prevented with this. Not all of it. You're still going to have those situations, but a lot of this can be at least got on top of with this policy. Parents with medical, kids that have medical issues, I've got two of them. I had no problem getting it in their IEPs and 504s. It, it's stated in there, right there for the teachers and for the administration that they need to have their devices on them, like in their pocket or, you know, out of sight. They don't get to use them, but it is a monitor. It is, it monitors their diabetes, it monitors their blood glucose all day long. And so they have to have it with them so it can read. But there's stipulations to it. And so I just really wanted to pass on the thanks and the thoroughness with this policy. Because of things like that, I was really anxious to get a hold of this policy and start going through it. And I was really hesitant on it because of having children that need their devices when they're in school and things like that. And I'm comfortable with it. And so thank you for the thoroughness and thank you for the work.
With that, we have Mr. Dorn and then Mrs. Hardy.
And I'm going to preface, as I go through questions, you'll be, I'll be back in the queue a couple of times. But I, I think we're in the right direction and I, I appreciate the advancements that have been made since this came up months ago and then to here. I did want to comment, I like the idea of a photo repository, especially for, because it reminded me that it's, if kids miss out or if we're behind a camera, you miss out on the other aspects because you're focusing on what is a recording, what is, you know, whether it's a video or still photo or whatever you're doing with it. So even if you go out, I go out on a hike or I'm on a travel trip, sometimes I have to put the camera away because I'm missing the other pieces of that. So I just want to say I like that. One of my questions is, do we have any indication of parent support for the ban? I'm going to put it in quotes, basically that's, you know, in terms of the parent survey here in the slides, that's all just in terms of how the district communicates. Yes, we like the way the district. But do we have any indication of parent, the level of parent support to put in a ban?
No, we do not have any data on that. I mean, anecdotally, as we've heard from parents, I think I would speak to it. I said before is that it's very divided in terms of support and then also not supporting a ban. But we do not have any specific data for us. That staff survey was just to staff.
Yeah. And I, and I guess that's part of my concern, that we need at least a majority support, you know, and because that's one of the biggest issues, that parents, when the kid comes home and says, they wouldn't let me, and then, you know, but it, it comes through in a lot of things. So I, I, if there's a way to get a sense of that or in the absence of it, as you, we do a camp, a PR campaign, and I made an notation on that, we have to convince parents, we have to gain their support. So related to that was, and I can't remember when the State Board of Education did its resolution, whether that was one, they kind of just said, oh yeah, we're going to do it, but whether there was public testimony. Do, do we have any knowledge of that? Because I'm, I'm trying to get a sense again, are, do we have parent support out there to put these limitations?
I do not know. I know it was presented in September and then voted on at a board meeting in October. And one point I guess I will make is, you know, when you say a majority, I don't know, you know, this is a hard policy decision where I feel like the board does have to acknowledge that, you know, parents, students will be divided on this. I guess I would go back to in terms of educators. There was overwhelmingly a majority of educator support to institute a policy with restrictions like this.
Right. Okay. And I, and I really appreciate that. And again, I, I can't remember if I said it earlier, but thank you for the local bits of pieces because that was one of the main things I had. Can I do one more? Do you want me to put me back in the queue?
Got a line of questions. We'll put you back in the queue. We will go to Mrs. Hardy, then Mr. Burgess, then Ms. Carol Hubbard, then Ms. Dulean.
And mine is back. I read Anxious Generation last year, actually. Mr. Daley from Hutch passed out a CTE committee and it was changing. It's changed the way I've approached even with my own children. And one of the points in the book is about cell phones and lunch and how on schools that have gone cellphone-free on campus, students are communicating and doing things more. But because we have an open campus, I think that changes a lot of the dynamics and that students then, you know, it's those secondhand effects, they'll just leave campus. And in a lot of ways, they're safer sticking around campus where there's, you know, caring adults that are there to keep an eye on them. And I know what I got into leaving campus at West Valley. And I can only imagine it's gotten even squirlier, especially without the bridge to cross the, the street safely to get to McDonald's and the other places, although I think it's been closed for a while. So when we talk about the phone users during lunch, like, it's a good point. And I do want kids to learn those social skills, but I feel like we need to teach them those social skills and we need to teach them and provide them alternatives. So I think like a Randy Smith, when I've gone there during their passing or their lunch periods, they have foosball and ping pong and open gym. And I know when I taught at Tannenall, that was an option you finish lunch. We're providing opportunities to create that social dynamic because oftentimes, I know even for myself, my cellphone is a safety net where if I don't feel confident socializing, I can just do something on my phone and then I don't have to feel awkward. That is socially acceptable for me to use my phone and nobody's judging me and thinking that I'm weird. And kids do the same thing. It is a safe place to retreat to when you don't know how to make friends. So having a way where if, once we do this, encouraging our teachers to have, like, can we have rotating clubs during lunch where they go, that was a lot of how I learned. I mean, I'm autistic. I was an odd little duck in high school. And that was where I made my friends, going to the student government that met during lunch, going to somebody's classroom. So bringing those things back to help students learn those social skills in less contrived spaces. Or maybe doing something like screen time challenges between the classes or something where everybody competes to see if they can get their screen time down. And, you know, just like you do other ways, some ways to encourage this positive behavior that we want to see. I know from, I have a degree in special ed and a lot of that is positive behavioral sports interventions, that you cannot just penalize your way to the behavior you want to see. You need to reward the behaviors that you want to see and then you will see more of those good behaviors. And there are ways around doing that where we've already limited their access. This is a time that we can start teaching them to use those cell phones well and in responsible ways so that when they go to their jobs, they understand, every single one of us, I mean, who has their cellphone in their pocket? Right? And I've checked mine because I have kids that went from one activity and went home to a babysitter and I have not been home. So I'm keeping an eye just to make sure, but I put it back in my pocket. I've learned that skill. We have to teach kids that skill. So much in sped, we say, you know, is this a motivation or is this a skill deficit? And 99 times out of 100, it's a skill deficit. Most people aren't, you know, it's kids who can do well do do well. They're not failing because they want to fail. They're failing because they don't know how to succeed. And we have to teach them the skill that they're missing, which part of that is how to effectively not get on their cellphone and replacement behaviors and all those things. So I see lunch as that opportunity, but it's going to take professional development for our teachers to know how to handle it. It's going to take the fact that teachers, oftentimes that lunch is their free time, so they can't just lose their duty-free lunch. So we have to plan as a board and as administration how we can support to get the behavior we want, which is kids socializing again and kids doing all of that. But that falls back on us. It's not just going to happen magically because we, we ban cell phones. The behavior, like with any other behavior that we don't want, will push to the fringes and they'll leave campus and they'll find ways to do it unless we can find something more attractive for them to do where they want to stick around and be off their phones.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. And let me just say as, as a side note, Mrs. Hardy, I am shocked to hear that you may have gotten into trouble off campus during lunchtime. As someone who went to school with you, that, that, that is surprising.
Shocked.
And I, I will say that I was a perfect angel when I was off campus. So, but kind of following up on the, on the, the discussion about lunch, I think, you know, when I see the comments that lunch places are louder in places where students, you know, don't have access to them during lunch, you know, things like that, or what was in The Anxious Generation, like, it sounds like, yeah, maybe we should restrict access during lunch. But I appreciate what Mrs. Hardy was, was saying, both in terms of the social interactions and, you know, some folks just wanting to kind of retreat. That's perfectly acceptable and a reasonable, reasonable thing. But I also wanted to, to note that a lot of the commentary that we're getting from students in particular is about the fact that high schoolers are nearly adults and they have more responsibilities. And that might include, as Ms. Gillum touched on during the presentation, might include things like work or taking care of siblings. And there's that, there's a need for us some access, I think. I think lunch period is a good point of time for that because scheduling is important. Scheduling does matter. Plans can change in the middle of the day and, and messages need to be able to be, to, to be passed and received appropriately. I don't think a workplace would necessarily know the, the school's protocols, for example, of communicating with a child, whereas a parent could just call the front office. I don't know that would work for a, a place of work or something else. So I, I'm in support of allowing access during lunch at this point in time. I have a handful of, of comments really, but maybe I'll, I'll ask a question just for the benefit of, of everybody. Is this, would these policies and ARs apply to charters or does the charter school APC come up with their own policy on cellphone use? It's getting to the consistency question.
It, it would apply to charters unless they had a specific waiver that they had requested and the board granted for that policy.
Okay, thank you. That's, that was my assumption. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, okay. So on the note about cyberbullying data, that's only, that we don't really have that data specifically. data specifically, is there any plans to, this is not necessarily related to the policy, of course, but can we start collecting data?
Let me jump in first, and then, so that's tricky, right? Because a lot of cyberbullying happens off-campus, it doesn't necessarily happen on-campus, and so school districts aren't capable of disciplining students for off-campus activity unless it's creating a substantial disruption within the learning environment. And so even if we started collecting that data, it would be very specific to something that happened during school, and hopefully cyberbullying will decrease quite a bit if the board puts a consistent cellphone use policy in place. And so I'd have to think on that, whether or not we would start collecting that data specifically, but our hope is that that cyberbullying would dramatically decrease because of the consistent implementation of no cellphone, like, no cellphones within the learning environments.
I have a couple more comments, and then I'll be done.
I have a line of people, yeah. Okay, Ms. Carol Hubbard.
I just wanted to speak to the cellphone ban. It appears in a, in a report that I'm reading, is that it, that they're actually going to the state level in light of, it says, student academic and mental health concerns. And so nine states have already adopted cellphone bans in the schools, and then 16 have got statewide legislation happening, and seven have, and I didn't write it down, hold on, seven have state education department issued policy recommendations. So that's 32 out of 50 states. So I think it's starting to roll forward. You know, and it's just, my side note is, education, I mean, I, I want to see school get back to school. I feel like we got derailed, you know, in, during COVID, and I want to see school get back to school. I want to see academic, academic rigor. And, and if we can get these cellphones out of the way, for the most part, it seems like, well, and the research in the book that we all read shows that their scores started increasing. So, I mean, I, scores aren't everything. I understand that, and I, and I mean to say that every time I talk about scores, because I'm a, I'm a big math person, so like, I like to see the numbers. But I know that, that a child's success isn't always about a score. But if we can increase reading and mathematics and history and science, if we can increase all those things and really focus on that and get these distractors out of the way, I think that's going to help education a lot.
Dr. Minner?
Okay, thanks for letting me jump in. We are hoping to bring this policy forward to a first reading May 6th, and so the policy and the AR are in front of the board in this work session right now. I think we've had some really good, robust conversations about philosophical thoughts. But if you have specific recommendations on the policy or AR that you would like to see changed for May 6th, that would be helpful. I think we can continue the conversation as is, but just wanted to have that on the table, that a part of the work session is moving us forward to that May 6th, and really having a good idea where the board might be in terms of language for the policy, and then the AR would reflect that.
Thank you, Dr. Minner. I'm going to jump in real quick myself, and also just say, I know that this hasn't passed yet, but even if HB 57 doesn't pass, I do foresee this bill coming forward and passing as a standalone, and that is the wireless telecommunications device policy that will be coming out from the state. Right now, it is in HB 57. And what it says is, each school district shall adopt a policy that regulates the possession and use of non-school-issued wireless telecommunications device, devices during regular school hours, including lunch and passing periods. And my only reason for bringing that up is that I just wanted to basically just reiterate that it's really, I think it's imperative that we get the work done on this policy and get this passed so that we have it in place as the legislature is going to require us, us to do so, as is, as the state of Alaska will be another state that will fall in line with being a state that will be banning telecommunications devices in schools. With that, we have Mrs. Julian, and then Mr. Dorn, and then Mr. Burgess.
Okay, perfect, then, um, thank you for that. On the AR, the only thing that I'd like to see changed is, on the AR, line 19, I'd like it to be struck that where it says, may use their device during lunch. I'd prefer to read, high school students 9 through 12 may use their device before and after school. So I guess it's just during lunch, striking that. And this is the reason, and it was stated in the presentation, but I, but I pulled up the numbers from NEA. So there, thank you for saying that there's, there's a mixed bag when it comes to except-for educators. 83% of educators from the NEA support prohibiting cellphone use during the entire school day with exception of medical or assistive technology needs. 83% of educators. If we're going to ask our educators to do anything more, which, which we are constantly, let's get them to perhaps things that we are going to be beholden to as a school district. We heard time and time again, we hear time and time again, that funding needs to be attached to outcomes. We know that limiting cellphone use is attached to that. We do not have a metric that we're going to be measured on, which is, did we get our kids ready to participate in the world with cellphones? I'm, thank you, Mrs. Carol Hubbard, for mentioning that that's, that's parents. Parents, if we can assist, if we can assist the students that we have in our district and give them the gift that they don't know is a gift, but give them the gift of a cellphone-free use time, and give our educators the gift of a consistent policy across the board, I think that that's going to increase the accountability measures that the state wants to tie more funding to. And not once did I hear that that funding is going to be tied to, are we preparing our students to be able to participate in the world that has cellphones? What I'm hearing is, are they increasing their math scores? Are they increasing reading? Are they coming to school? And if coming, if they choose not to come to school or skip out halfway through the day because we have open campuses, well, then perhaps we need to consider that as well. If they're going, it is an addictive thing. They, their frontal lobes are still not developed. It is like saying, if you replace the word cellphone with alcohol, I know you're addicted, but I want to teach you how to be able to manage this. They, we need to provide the best learning environment possible. And I understand that there might, that students work, but that's just another layer then of responsibility that it's going to teach them to take that proactive step, or to even, you know, work with, you know, right after school, check their phones. But I am strongly in support of taking a bold step forward, because if you look right here, 83% of educators quoted from the NEA support cellphone-free use during the entire school day. And one more, one more point to this, we have a lot of community members who are right now talking to us about adult content in our schools, in our libraries. I'm going to make a bold statement that 99.99999% of adult content that students are seeing on school property is not in the library, it is on a cellphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. Mr. Dorn.
Okay. Just a couple of observations and information that you might be able, you might have, and if you don't, that's, I mean, I understand that. And I, I will have things when we get into the policy and AR specifically. Do we have Alaska, as the state gathered, Alaska, you know, there's the national, we've got some local, actually approximately 85% of our teachers locally, which is much more important to me, because they're the ones who'll have to do this, say, phones off all day, or with, you know, primarily out of instruction. But is there anything Alaska that we have?
Mr. Dorn, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and I'm not either, so I was just wondering if you might. Okay. The other thing that struck me as I was reading through the information, which I really appreciated, the page of the benefits of phone-free policy. What struck me is, is there anything about the benefits of phone access? Because when I look at, the conversation is, we're not talking to adults who are using their phone quite a bit of the time. We're not talking to kids who are using their phone, and there's very little causative, there's a lot of observational information, but not causative. Now, we're saying, well, this might connect, but I don't think there's very much studies that actually say it's causative by the phone. There are other factors that are involved. So I'm just trying to say, to get in my mind as we do this, and so we don't get surprises down the line, down the line with what legislation or others might say. Do we know if there's the other side of the story? Right now, most of the story is against phones, except we all use them. But do, do we know if there's any other information out?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, Mr. Dorn, you're wondering if there's, you know, specific presentation arguing what the benefits of allowing students to have their phones would be. I mean, you know, certainly speaking anecdotally from experience, it's, you know, when I remember when phones first started, it was helpful that everybody had a calculator on their phone, because maybe they didn't have a calculator. I don't know, I don't have anything to provide for you. That's certainly something we can look into in terms of if there are arguments for the other side of the coin that are out there.
Yeah, thank you. And, and, yeah, you addressed some of it in terms of, yeah, and I had made a notation here that the phones have become too broad a tool. There's so many things on it that, where you might have said, we could use it for this, but now it opens this. So, okay, I think, one other, and then I'll leave it to before. Because you mentioned student, the regional student council and conversation, and maybe whether there's been broader, and principals have had that with their student governments within, what fascinated me, and if you have a reflection on it in your conversation, when we met with student councils, there were probably, I had five or six different groups, all interested in the cellphone. The distinction was consistent that probably freshmen and sophomores, definitely middle schoolers are not mature enough, but juniors and seniors are mature enough to do it. That, you know, it's like, do it to the other person, but not to me, type of thing, which we all can get into. Broader, and there was a quick conversations we had, but broader conversations you've had with regional student council, very much specific to this, and I'm just trying to get that sense of student support. And I've heard anecdotally from some of the principals, when they put some restrictions on, they did get some groundswells, I don't know to what percentage, but student support that helped them make those efforts. So any reflection on that?
I think that, I mean, much of the feedback, I believe you heard, Mr. Dorn, through regional student council, really mirrors what I heard from them. I will acknowledge that most of those students are juniors and seniors, so, you know, certainly the reflection of them becoming self-aware of what they, what their own maturity and how they see other students as perhaps being less mature in their ability to do it. I'm also thinking through, I don't know, I don't have any data to speak to it. I think much of it is anecdotal, again, around students, because it is that really division between them, that I echo what you hear, that it's that piece of, some students are very supportive of it and want teachers to enforce a consistent policy because they see the benefit that it has in the engagement in their classroom, that when students aren't checked out and they actually want to be in the class to learn, that having that consistently enforced policy is really helpful for them to have that greater class engagement. Hope you my thought on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Burgess, we're going to jump to Ms. Maple, and then we'll come back to you. Ms. Maple?
I was just going to say that while in principle, I really agree with, with Ms. Julian, my thing pulling me away from having a more strict policy is that I want to make sure that we have a policy that's actually enforceable. I know that that's been expressed, but that there being some wiggle room, I think, has value in an ability to enforce, and that I'd rather have broad enforcement than just constant undermining, and, yeah, that's all.
Thanks, Ms. Maple. I agree. I think Dr. Minner also had comments close to that as well.
Yes, I mean, lunchtime would be extremely difficult for us to enforce a ban. You know, we would, if this is the board's will, we would do best efforts there, but to think that we could police 400 or 500 students at lunch and consistently enforce it would be a tall task for us, so.
Thank you, Dr. Minner. Ms. Gillum?
Thank you. I was just going to say, though, that I do want to acknowledge what Ms. Hardy shared about the activities, that it is certainly something that being mindful of it and thinking ahead, that we could certainly encourage schools to have phone-free zones or areas where they're doing that instruction about how to engage, acknowledging that, you know, some students now might not even bring a phone to school because they don't want to have it at all. So I certainly think that that is a piece that we could engage with schools in, of how can you encourage phone-free time during lunch, and how could we support that education piece of that?
Mr. Burgess?
So one, one thing, circling back to the instructional use, I just, as far as the, the policy and AR go, I'm not 100% clear on how it works if, I'm assuming, okay, let me back up. I'm assuming that if they have their phone out for a particular instructional use, that is the only use that, that they're allowed, that they're allowed to do. And so how is that enforced in a classroom, and, and then where, I guess, where is it covered? And you don't have to, you can take this as a comment rather than a question. I just want to make sure that the policy and AR cover, or, or policies that might be referenced would cover those kinds of issues around instructional use. So if it's already covered, you're good.
I think the context you provided is good, and we'll take a look at it. In conditions of use in the administrative regulation from lines 21 through 24, I think that gets at that, that preapproval piece is a big piece. So it says, with preapproval from the building administrator, middle and high school teachers may facilitate the use of personal electronic devices for specific instructional activities. And so I think that preapproval piece is a really big piece of that, and then specific instructional activities hopefully gets at the narrow focus of what that cellphone would be used for.
And then my assumption is that consequences are covered in the same spot that they would be covered if they're just misusing their phone in general.
They are. That's in the, towards the end of the administrative regulation, starting on line 69.
Thank you. So just one more comment, if I may, different subject, but it's, I don't, I don't have any other suggested revisions to this. I think it's great, you've put a lot of work into it already, so thank you. But my comment is more about the rollout, and I really appreciated the, the discussion about the proactive communication and making sure that we're, you know, setting the stage ahead of time for this. And I would suggest, you know, that we do what we can to avoid making that kind of a lecture format and saying, this is good for, you know, telling the students what's good for them, and we good for them, and we know what's best, and instead trying to find a way to generate their own buy-in. You know, I appreciated Ms. Burnett's discussion about, you know, comparison to her own household. And I just wanted to, just thinking way back to the AASB meeting back in November, there was this great session on cellphone policy, where they did have kind of an interactive work sessions with students, to get them to think about their own phone use and whether it's really in line with their values. And so, just, just kind of throwing that out there, that, you know, that, that could help us be successful if we actually do activities that, that get the kids to understand that it could actually be good for them.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Mrs. Hardy?
It was actually along the same lines of that. It was Common Sense Media. One of the representatives came up, and it was with students that attended the conference, and it was, she had us open our phones and look at our screen time usage and talk about it. And I think it might be great, especially in our high schools, to start out in our freshman health classes and be like, our first thing that we talk about at the beginning of the year, let's talk about social media and phone addiction and all of these things, and not lecturing, but let's explore, how are you spending your time? That was, I think, one of the really pivotal things is, we were looking at our own usage, which might be a reason to bring your phone to class and be like, oh, yeah, that's a lot of time that I didn't realize I was spending doing this thing. And there are tools and resources through, it's free with Common Sense Media, that they have that as a lesson plan, to help our educators, you know, get guided through a lesson. But again, teaching these skills and getting students to be cognizant of their own usage, and then maybe reminding them halfway through the year again, like, hey, we're halfway through the semester, how's your screen usage? You know, they could set goals, do different things to teach that responsible usage. I know at one point in time, I was addicted to my cellphone, and it, it took a concerted effort to learn the, it was young children, and that's where you disappear, when sometimes you just need a human interaction, and you're not getting it with your two-year-old. Those are, are things that every, it's a human experience, and so, having the ability, that was another piece from that same thing, having the adults talk to these teenagers and be like, yeah, no, I struggle with this too, we can get through this together. Let's talk about how we figure it out, and what good rules you can set for yourself. You're not going to penalize students out of the behavior, we have to teach them and get them to buy in, as Mr. Burgess said.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. The board is going to take a brief recess. When we come back, we will kick off questions with Mr. Doran and Ms. Carol Hubbard. Board, please be back here at 7:07.
... And in that same vein, in the same paragraph, on the next, the last line, that student, I suggested deleting owned, and just have it student personal, student devices, because that's then what we're really talking about. And whether they're owned by the student or owned by the parent, doesn't really matter if the student is the one who's having it. So, those are my suggestions in the first paragraph.
Just to capture that comment, Mr. Doran, do you want, because I started, okay, you want to strike student-owned in both of those, at both points in that paragraph, and have it be consistent in, say, personal devices?
No, the, in the first one, I would strike student-owned.
Okay.
In the second instance, I would delete the owned section, so it would be student devices.
Okay.
Because that's really, in that introductory paragraph, that's really what we're dealing with, the student devices. And I, and I think that clarity, as opposed to even, the, the personal is generalized, anyway, if that makes sense.
Ms. Carol Hubbard, did you still have a question or anything input?
Well, I, I kind of, we were good, we kind of moved on to wordsmithing here. I, I was going to ask about, about teachers and cellphone use. Is there a policy against teacher cellphone use? Is that a slippery slope?
Not a policy, but I, it does come up in acceptable use of technologies through our HR processes. And, you know, could be a part of a teacher's evaluation, where if a principal regularly came into a classroom and the teacher was on their cellphone and distracted, not instructing, then that's where that would come up, probably under the professionalism domain.
Okay. I just think it's going to be important to make sure that we have something in place that teachers need to lead by example. And I don't know what that, where that is or how that works, but I, that was my thought.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. And, Mr. Burgess?
Just following up for Mr. Doran's proposed changes, I would support the striking student-owned in the first instance. And I would actually suggest that we just use personal devices again in the second time, so strike student-owned again, replace it with personal, so that we're just consistent in language throughout. The other thought I had related to this is, you know, the state doesn't have their own policy yet, but they're working on it, we have language, and we might consider whether we want to be consistent with the language that is proposed by this, by HB 57. It's not my favorite, to be honest, but what they use is non-school issued wireless telecommunications devices. It's wordy, it's a mouthful, it is very clear what it means.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. On that thought, I like the thought, but I also think that the policy that the state will be passing kind of gives us the leeway to be as wordsy or not as wordsy. And I think that I like the simple language compared to the complicated language. That's just my thought on it. Mr. Doran?
Yes, in support of that. One of the things that strikes me is that this is one of those policies that students themselves will go to. And so, having that clear. If I might, just of perspective, why I favor that being student devices rather than personal devices is basically the clarification that Loa brought up about the, for teachers, we're talking right here in this policy for students, and everything else talks about students. So that's why I, I stayed with the student versus broadening it out.
Mr. Burgess? And then, Mrs. Hardy?
Thank you, Mr. Doran, I appreciate that clarification. And for the sake of clarity, I would suggest that we adjust that sentence to make it grammatically more clear, if we're going to strike owned after students, and we want it to be clear that it's student use that we're concerned with, because it might not be a student, it might not be a device that is actually belongs to the student in the first place, it might be parents, or it's something they borrow, or who knows? But I think that maybe cleaning that up, it could look like, shall regulate access to and use of personal electronic devices by students, something like that. Because it's, it's, right. I think, if I understand your point correctly, I think that is a grammatically more clear sentence.
Dr. Minor?
What about a friendly amendment to that, therefore the district shall regulate student access to and use of personal electronic devices?
There we go.
So, students at the, more towards the beginning.
Will you repeat that, Dr. Minor?
Therefore, the district shall regulate student access to and use of.
Mrs. Hardy?
Just in support of the work of the group, and that it goes while keeping the noun being personal electronic devices, because the AR, that is the definition. Personal electronic devices are defined broadly as, so being consistent throughout that that's what we're talking.
Mr. Doran?
Clarity, because I might be of the same type of thing that I was thinking about, but could you just repeat your suggestion there?
Just that I supported, so if we're saying we're defining it, we're defining personal electronic devices. And there's a definition in the AR that says, personal electronic devices are defined broadly as student-owned electronic devices capable of telecommunication, internet access, recording images or audio, transmitting images or audio, or any device determined by school personnel to be a personal electronic device. So that's the definition that we're giving students, so we should keep using the same noun of personal electronic device.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
So to that point, then, do we want to, on the AR, line nine, do you want to stick to one document? Because if we ping pong over to the definition, we, do we want to get rid of the student-owned in that same sentence? in that same sentence in line nine?
Are you talking about in AR, Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes, in the definition. Personal electronic devices are defined broadly as any electronic device capable. And skip the student-owned again, if we're going to, yeah, good catch.
Dr. Minor?
I guess my hesitation with that is, we do issue Chromebooks and have students use devices that are capable of these things. And so tying the ownership, you know, to a student or to a family and not the school.
But then they're not personal. Those are, like Mrs. Hardy said, those are district issued.
Mrs. Hardy.
Could we change it then to personal electronic devices are defined broadly as non-district issued electronic devices capable of telecommunication?
And that will settle, go ahead, Miss Gilliam, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that's also in line with the language in House Bill 57.
Mr. Doran?
Would there be space, and again, I don't like policy to be too many words in it. But because of our very early conversation of what is a personal electronic device, specifically, we're looking at cellphones, smartwatches, there are some earbuds that give you, you know, and I'm wondering if it just as an asterisk and kind of a bracketed parentheses, that it might be worth in that, at the very end of that first section before conditions of use, just putting that, et cetera. I don't, but it may be well enough known that, I don't know all the devices that are out there. I'm learning that's how smartwatches are hooked up, that our grandson can text their parents. I mean, I just learned that in the last few days, is where, three days, is where taking care of them. So, you know, these things, I don't want to be restrictive, but I don't know whether it's a need or if there's not, you guys are closer to it, tell me.
Could I ask a point of clarification for that? Because I hear you. But if we're talking about non-district issued devices, I mean, so schools aren't handing out Apple watches, you know, we're not giving out tablets, we give out a Chromebook. So I'm just curious if that just already falls under that banner? And if it's necessary to do that, or if it might be necessary to do that? I know that's kind of very contradictory there.
No, no, I think along the same lines, my thing is, does everybody, if they needed to find out what the cellphone policy is in our district, do they know to look under personal electronic devices? Or if they say, hey, it's a smart watch, I mean, I'm just trying to think if they do a word search, where would they find that?
Dr. Minor, maybe?
Yeah, I know we had some conversations about that. At one point in time, we did have a long list of like updated devices. One of my big pet peeves is looking at personal electronic device policies and seeing like Walkmans and CD players and like all of this outdated technology that never gets updated because it evolves so quickly. And so that's why we hesitated to put any specific technologies within the policy. But I do hear you on the, probably the most searched thing right now is going to be, where's the cellphone policy? And so I don't know, there's a way in AASB policy manual to like place a tags. So if somebody is searching cellphone, it would bring them to this without having to put it right within the AR or the policy itself.
I'm not aware of that, but we could look at a longer title to the policy. I think for the, the AASB is student possession and use of portable electronic devices, including cellular phones. That's the title.
If we just did a bracket, would that come up?
I think once you get the text in there, it would definitely come up.
And then like et cetera, but it may be worth, so that if they did a quick word search with this new platform, that that would, and we could test it to make sure that it.
Maybe in parentheses, just cellphone policy. We're going to jump back into our row of questions, though, Mrs. Hardy.
This is in the same vein, I like that the definition is very broad at the end. You know, any device the school determines is a personal electronic device. So that means any emerging technology, we can say that what it is, or that's what we've determined it to be. It might be okay, some were in there to do current examples of, because it is a good point. Just even today, I went and searched a different district and I typed in cell to try to get the policy that I was looking for. That is what I mean, most parents would search for. And we could use, I totally understand the idea of like seeing Walkman in there would be like, come on. Hopefully, we're getting our things done more often than that. So current examples of personal electronic devices include smartwatches, cellphones, and dah dah dah. That way it searches, it gives an example, and it clarifies at least the two biggest things that students own. And you might even do earbuds if that's what we're saying as well. Include but are not limited to.
I support that, that's a good solution. Ms. Carol Hubbard?
You already suggested it, I was going to suggest parentheses with cellphone policy right there, next to the, yeah.
I like Mrs. Hardy's suggestion better. Mr. Burgess?
I appreciate both suggestions, I don't think it has to be either or. I do think that, I agree that I like that any device determined by school personnel is in there. And I wouldn't be opposed to adding a shortlist. I don't really think it's necessary, but I guess it does help to clarify and, you know, if someone wants to know if their Apple Watch is covered in policy somewhere, they can search for it and it pops this up, then great. So I wouldn't be opposed to it. I would also say that we should just go ahead and add cellphone to the title of the policy. I would say it can just be, we could just add cellphones and personal electronic, you know, just, because I think that makes it more clear and readily searchable. Or if someone's just even just browsing our policy manual titles, they'll say, oh, that's what that is. So I think that just, it just helps make it more clear to the public and I would support it. I do not think we should go to that whole AASB, you know, five sentence title or whatever that was. But just adding cellphones and, I think, covers it.
No five sentence titles, that's what Mr. Burgess says, got it. Are there any other suggestions, Mr. Doran? Oh, Mr. Doran, if you could, Mrs. Julian, and then we'll go to you.
Are we looking at the, can we move over to the AR, are we still on?
Yeah, we're doing both, yeah, go ahead.
I am going to recommend again officially, that on line 19 of the AR, we strike during lunch, comma, and. So it would read, high school students nine through 12 may use their devices before and after school, period. And the reason is for this. I want to make lunchtime and I want to give the students the best opportunity possible. When I think about the implementation of letting students use it at lunch, I feel sorry for all the teachers and all of the aides and everybody who has students after lunch, because they're coming back down off of their addiction. We know already, everyone in this room has said, we recognize that students are going to be on their phones, looking at their phones. Some of them have jobs, some of them have other responsibilities, some of them may need to check a text message. But most of them are going to look at social media threads, their text messages. That's what's going to happen. And I want to make sure that lunch is about connection, not disconnection. It feels very disingenuous for us to create a cellphone policy without really taking the full step in. This feels like we're kind of walking around an issue and trying to please everyone. But if we're going to do this, and there are many states that have bell-to-bell bans on cellphone use, they're using it before school, they're using it after school, they're using it on the bus, they're using it on the weekends, they're using it at night, they're not sleeping. Why can't we, as a school district, take a bold step forward and say, we are going to ban it also at lunchtime? So that's really, really, I'm really feeling very strongly about that, obviously. And I didn't think I was going to feel strong about this tonight, but I'm really feeling strongly about this. Speaking to equity, it also will make lunchtime a more equitable space versus who has the newest device, what's happening in the bathroom, it reduces cyberbullying, it reduces the fear of missing out. Let's give them an opportunity to see what it's like to have lunch without. And they will go off campus and use their cellphones, but that's their choice. Let's try to make it, to incentivize them to be in a space that's not instruction time, where they might actually go, oh, this is interesting, this is different. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Julian. I'm going to respectfully disagree. I appreciate your comments, I do, and I hear where they're coming from. But I think that the policy as is without doing this is going to be a huge transition, especially for high school. In elementary and middle, probably not as big of a transition, but when it comes to high school, this is going to be huge. And I think that for our students alone, and this is not just staff and teachers and them, this is our students and their defense, I think that we are asking a lot of them. And I understand that it's addiction, I get that. And I completely, I do not disagree with your reasonings. I just foresee a bigger issue by not allowing the students to have them on their lunch period. You know, the open campus thing, that's probably a discussion for another time as well. I was not well behaved when I was in school and my graduating class is the reason we lost open campus. So you know, that's a whole nother discussion. And I think whether students have phones or not, that doesn't come into play. If they don't have phones, we will push them off campus. I 100% feel that, I think 100%. If we take away their phones on lunch, they are going to go to the avenue where they can have them. And that's, if it's West Valley, that's going across the street to McDonald's to hang out. That's if they're at Lathrop, they're going to, I can't even say Denny's anymore, what's over there, Wendy's? You know, they're going to go where they can use their phone and have access to it. So the point of teachers having to deal with them coming down and stuff, it's almost moot because they're still going to be coming off of that lunchtime, whatever it may be. That's just kind of where I sit with it, I think that they should have their cellphones for lunch, especially as we roll this out. Mrs. Hardy?
Just a question to the administration, if cellphones were to be banned during lunch, who is the staff that would actually be having to manage that ban? Because in high schools, that's generally the teacher's duty free lunch. We don't have A and B lunches, I don't think, in our high schools.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Hardy. So that would be incumbent upon the three administrators and then three safety assistants, who would be the ones that would be on duty during that time, that would be managing the whole building for cellphone use.
And do we, sorry, follow up?
Yeah.
Is it still, I know when I was there, you didn't have to eat in the cafeteria, we ate in the fishbowl, we ate in all the hallways, and so that's a pretty large area to cover.
Yes, thank you, I should have said that before. So yeah, typically, schools aren't, because they don't have split lunches, they don't limit where students go. And we have done that in the past, students, you know, want to access teachers' classrooms for support. So there's lots of teachers that allow students to eat in their classrooms, and then they also eat in hallways throughout the building. And so it would be the entire place of the school they'd be monitoring, yeah.
Ms. Carol Hubbard, and then Mr. Doran?
So I wanted to say the same that Mrs. Julian said. I did have devices during lunch, I had it highlighted, I had it circled, and I had a question, I thought, oh. Because everything in me wants to, wants to strike the words. I don't know that it's realistic, because of enforcement, there's a lot of, there's a lot of space there to enforce. And maybe if this could be considered a pilot program, and next year, if we're at this table, maybe we could have, you know, if it becomes a problem, then maybe we'll have specific, I don't know, examples or issues that we can address then, and then maybe we can tighten up even further. I want to, but I'm hesitant to do it because of the enforcement factor.
Mr. Doran?
I'm comfortable with allowing lunch use on several fronts. One is, this is a big shift, and yes, there's kind of a balance there. I had a flashback on the conversations of when smoking was allowed in schools, so.
Whoa, Doran, whoa. How long ago was this?
Before your time, let me just say. When I was younger. And there were designated smoking areas. No, for students, yes, yes. It was a very common, at the high school level, so you know, it wasn't middle school, we didn't have middle schools then, but at the elementary level was not allowed. But high schools have designated areas.
Pink lady days?
So, so before we get too distracted on that, that, you know, I think it is, this is in terms of with cellphones, whether, the other thing that I think about is, it'd be very interesting, our assumption is, they're going to go off, the students will go off the deep end at lunch. It could actually be the reverse. If they're socializing more, face-to-face or whatever, you know, during passing times, those types of things, that could carry over into lunch. I did like the idea of maybe a zone, cellphone, phone-free zone or something like that. I am, I like the idea of that school activities, but I am very, very hesitant about building that into an expectation because staff is already greatly stressed. And as a matter of fact, a lot of them are involved in students having lunch in their classrooms, following up on work or just having time with teachers or just being in a safe place. Or there are other clubs that do meet some different activities. So I don't want to add to that and I don't want to lose those other relationships. And, you know, mindful of that transition to a work setting, employers may say, you may not use the phone, you have to have it off during your work time, but when you're on lunch, you're on, you know, and this can be a way, as I think somebody else had observed earlier, you know, they could learn skills, how do you use it within? And, you know, it's going to be a struggle, a piece, a time to get it back in the locker before they go to their afternoon class. I do agree that after lunch, whatever grade level it is, after recesses and a break, it's always a little bit of a challenge to bring them back. And by the time you get to the end of a day, you know, the joke was, sixth period was, or the last period of the day was the toughest, sometimes it was, sometimes it wasn't. And the rotations that schools used so that it wasn't always the same one, you know, yes, that's a reality. But I think it's a workable one. So I'm very comfortable with the lunchtime one, and then especially with the idea, even if we closed campus... even if we closed campus, I could see them slipping outside the door to try, you know, as when they did stop smoking in schools, there were those who, you know, even with closed campuses. So when I look at the big picture with that, I'm just saying, I am comfortable with having that lunchtime option. And I think the reasonableness for administrators to really, and staff, to really follow a new policy on this consistently, it makes sense for what we expect of them.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. Now I have to remember what I was gonna say. No, I appreciate the conversation, and to Mrs. Julian, I do, I hear those concerns very much, and, you know, I'll say, you know, I'm a little bit on the fence on this. but I wanted to, so let's see, I wanted to bring it back around to a question that Mr. Dorn asked earlier about potential benefits of phone use. And this is mostly anecdotal, but it also kind of relates to something that Mrs. Hardy said earlier about, you know, there might be some students who just aren't very comfortable in the social setting of their school. Maybe they don't have friends, or maybe they just would rather not interact with anybody for a while, and it does give them kind of a socially acceptable avenue. But on top of that, there might be students who don't have strong connections in the school, and they actually socialize through their phone quite a bit. This is something that is being tracked by psychologists and counselors as a potential benefit. And again, I don't have the data there, I'm not sure that there is a lot of data, but it is out there that there are benefits to some students, especially those who feel isolated in a normal social setting, or as an outsider. They can find that social support that they need sometimes through online forums. So just throwing that out there as a potential benefit, since it came up. And I think that that's, you know, an important thing for us to consider as we discuss all the potential problems with going to, you know, online socialization, or prioritizing that over in-person. But it is a thing that does help some students and their mental health, and adults.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Mrs. Hardy.
Actually, I found it, so it's good. I was just making sure that we don't allow them at lunch during middle school, and that is in there.
Anything else from any other board members regarding policy or AR? Mr. Dorn.
The, going back to policy, the second paragraph. Originally, I started thinking of, you know, given, and the communication protocols was, you know, what are some examples of proactive things? But rather than asking for examples, the thought of district-slash-school. Because I think allowing, making it sure that the school establishes those protocols. What works within the individual school to, and there might be, you know, little differences. Rather than a district directive, you're going to handle it this way. But, and, you know, and I'm thinking that towards my latter days, as a principal, latter years, when cellphones were just coming in, and I, at the elementary, it was very easy to say, "They're in the backpack, they're," you know. And generally speaking, you can get away with that at elementary without much pushback at all. The only pushback I got was from parents who said, "Well, I have to let them know what to do after school." And their concern was, "Well, if I give the message to school, what if our kid doesn't get it?" And we changed our protocol to absolutely have a backup procedures to make sure we got the message to the student before school was out. That was our commitment, and we had to tweak that a little bit. So, but each school might come up with a little different way of doing it, and that's why I think of broadening that out to say, "The school needs to come up with it." You know, the district piece might be, say, "You figure out a communication protocol, let us know," or however that is, or you just trust them, they're the professionals, they're on the front line, to what works for their community. So that's my thought on that.
Dr. Minat?
I really like that distinction. We do have some really general, broad guidelines from the district perspective and the AR, but we know many of our schools, well, kindergarten through high school students have different communication protocols that they're using at the school level already, and we wouldn't want to prevent schools from using communication methods that they're already using and that are working. So broadening that out to the district and school, I think is great.
Thank you, Dr. Minat. Mrs. Hardy.
Yeah, Mr. Dorn's comments got me thinking, what about how this applies to some of our non-traditional schools? So North Star College is considered a high school, but we wouldn't, I don't think, expect our North Star College students to, we've got university rules and other things, or our CEC programs, or how that gets rolled out in some of those, and do we want to say there's exceptions there?
I think we can think of that. And the North Star College, North Star College is working on a handbook, and there's already different procedures that families are aware of, given that they're on campus. And so we'll take that feedback and figure out how we might build that into either the AR or just their handbook.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Hardy, for that question. I think the handbook would be the appropriate place for that, because we do have a number of North Star College students who do take classes at their attendance area school, so they would certainly need to be aware of this. I think it's also an opportunity for another teaching moment to, you know, make students aware that UAF professors may have their own policies around cellphones, and to make sure they're mindful of that. So thank you for that feedback.
Mrs. Julian.
I have a procedural question about the process of approving. So I know that traditionally, we only approve board policies, but in this instance, are you, are we gonna be also approving the administration, the AR?
No, so only the policy will come before the board for approval, but this conversation is incredibly helpful in terms of what will be in the AR, and making sure that it corresponds with what the intent of the board is through the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dorn.
If we're ready to move on?
Yeah.
To another. Under conditions of use, again, I'm focused on the policy in this, my last policy one. Second paragraph, suggestion that we move the phrase, "And not turned over to law enforcement", from being in the middle to being at the end. And probably would be, unless turned over to law enforcement. The reason I suggest that is, again, we're at reasonable care, the main focus here is, and the normal thing is, the school is confiscating it, they're gonna use reasonable care, and that's outlined later, and, you know, I like the way that's outlined later in AR. But, you know, that's really the focus, is our confiscation of it. The exception is, unless turned over to law enforcement. So it's not, just keeps the focus.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
I support that.
Any other questions from board members on the policy? Seeing none? Mr. Dorn?
Not on policy, I'll go to AR now.
Okay, Mr. Dorn.
Under conditions of use, second paragraph. The last sentence, "Teachers may not allow the use of personal electronic devices as a reward or during free time." My question there is, I thought of Kindles particularly. Because a lot of times, I mean, it was, before Kindles, it was, you know, have a book, finish the assignment early, you can read, and kids still do that. I've worked, walked into classrooms, and you see them, they're pulling out a book to read, and, you know, because they're finished, or whatever. I'm just, I don't consider Kindle as a personal electronic device, but it does have internet capabilities, most of them. But I know, and I remember when they first came out, or whatever the reader was, a third-grader who, yeah, that's what he read on. And he was the only one who had it, but it was like, yeah, why shouldn't he be able to read on that, rather than having to bring his Harry Potter book? So that's, whether this becomes too distinct, restrictive, so, just a thought.
I think we'll have to ponder on that one a bit, I mean, that's a really specific use case. And then, as you say, Kindle, I think of all the different models of Kindles, like, is it the, like, cheapest Kindle possible that my, my son has, that it can literally only do books, or is it the really cool Kindle that has, like, all the apps on it and stuff, and can lead you down these weird rabbit trails? And so I don't want to be overly prescriptive in nature, where a student wouldn't be able to access literary text, because I do think that's a powerful tool, but also don't want it to be open enough where, you know, there's all these workarounds to just getting back to the same apps and distracting things that, you know, students would maybe want to get to. So let's ponder on that, how we might incorporate that, unless you have a solution.
Well, it may or may not be the solution, pondering it is good, but it did strike me that maybe linking it with that instructional, you know, that there could be, you know, in that case, the teacher, I mean, it was brand-new, and the teacher came and said, "Is this all right?", and I, we bounced around, whether it would, so maybe something that is, goes beyond that, may not allow, tells them, there's no exceptions to this, to something, maybe, so ponder it, and maybe link it to that instructional use, preapproval type, you know, or whatever. But there's enough kids who are using those now, and especially traveling, and that's how they get a lot of their books, they love the paper ones. But they also use those regularly, if they're in the middle of a book.
Mrs. Hardy.
Along that same vein, so you could do something like, exceptions may be allowed on a case-by-case basis through appeal to the administration, because I'm watching you write on what would be considered a personal electronic device, and there are many high schoolers that might have a similar thing, and that might be something, I know for me, I need a laptop, if I can't type, my dyslexia becomes disabling, and so those types of things, there are students, I had one when I taught at Hutchinson, who we had a old, old version of something like that, but it was a pen that recorded what was being said aloud as they took their notes, so then they could go back and listen to the instruction just by typing. So there are assistive devices that might, the student might not have an IEP, but might have a pretty convincing reason why they need that specific tool. So if we allow having to go through the, "Here is all the things, and it's to be used in this manner."
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you, I would support Mrs. Hardy's suggestion there. And I would also say that we could potentially carve out a specific exemption in this same paragraph that Mr. Dorn was focused on, by saying something along the lines of, "With the exception of a e-reader that is not cap, that does not have internet capabilities," or something along those lines. So specifically defining a carve-out for an e-reader. I think that's reasonable, because I think a lot, you know, more and more these days, people are getting, including students, getting their literature from those e-readers. But there are some that have more capabilities than others, and we need to be cognizant of that. But also, because we're focused on this, I think there's a potential word change on line 23, should that may be a shall. So instead of "teachers may not allow," it says, "teachers shall not allow."
Okay, we've got Ms. Maple, and then Mrs. Hardy.
I just, I am afraid that the e-reader conversation will create a really slippery slope. Like, because my phone is what I use as an e-reader, I read my books on my phone, and I like, I mean, I know me in high school, and I would've been very quick to say, "Well, that's why I need my phone, that's what I'm doing." And I might not have had it approved, because you would know better, but it would sure create a pain for all the administrators in my building. Yeah, just, that's all.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yeah, along that same lines, I would say, making them have to go through the step of getting it approved, because the same deal, I didn't have an IEP in high school, but the use of audiobooks, like, that's pretty much how I read from now on. One is time, and two, I learn better auditorially. So that's where, if I read, I read Banks' Generation by listening to it. I now have a lot of books, so you're gonna have some students who may want to listen, can we have it on their Chromebooks, or you're gonna have those questions come up. So having some kind of carve-out where, if they don't have a 504 or an IEP, is there exceptions that can be made on the case-by-case basis, where it needs to be the student and the parent, and if you're going through that much effort, it's probably not trying to sneak the phone.
Mr. Dorn? Looked like a hand, I'm sorry.
Right, if there's anybody else.
There's nobody else ahead of you.
Okay, all right. You had talked about, Ms. Gillum, you had mentioned emergency allowances, you know, in an emergency, or for, because some of the feedback is that, "Well, if there was an emergency at the school, I want to know it, I need to know my kid is safe," or whatever. And you, and I see being more restrictive during that time, and especially with school safety presentations that I've heard nationally, they are very much against having massive cellphone going out, for the things you've mentioned and outlined in the slides. But you mentioned allowances during, what would that be like in emergency?
Mr. Dorn, I think that's the language that's actually in House Bill 57. Our draft policy and AR does not allow for use during emergencies, and speaks to exactly what we were talking about. However, House Bill 57 mentions, it just specifically says, "exceptions for students." It mentions medical or translation purposes, and then in the event of an emergency. So I can't say I'm exactly sure what their intent is, is that language in the legislation.
All right, that might fit, because my concern is that we're saying, it would be that we're saying, "You can't have your phone," but in an emergency, there would be an allowance for it, well, how do you get the phone? And then we have kids all over the place, you know, type of thing. So, which may be part of our feedback to the legislature. Indeed, it's interesting to me that the state has taken a encouraging, that districts do this, but they're not taking a stance. They have no responsibility. And so it'd be great if they said, "This is state law, you will restrict them, period." But they're not. So that might be feedback to them for that thing, so, okay. And one of the things, as I read through both the AR and the board policy, is just, and we talked about consistency, and you talked about that, is have principals have a, had a chance to talk as groups, and all of them, you know, we, you were mentioning that we have variance right now, especially across the secondary level. And every principal that I've talked to about cellphone policy, knowing this was coming up, has said, "Yeah, we're, we've made changes, we've..." knowing this was coming up, has said, you know, we're, we've made changes, we've, I'm just looking for that consistency. Are they all on board to say, we are going to do it this way, and enforce it, and then, you know, they've got the support from, from downtown to, to do that?
Yes, I, I mean, we've talked with the principals numerous times, we just met again with the system principals today. They are very excited about the policy, and I think excited in the support from the board, knowing that if it goes to that level, that they have the board's support in implementing this more restrictive policy. And so, yes, I would say they understand the heavy lift that it will be to get everybody consistent on it, but they're prepared for that, and have been preparing their school communities. I know when I was at the, because Diana and I have freshmen next year, when we were at the freshman open house presentation, Wes Valley referenced, here's what we have currently for our cellphone policy, but this is a topic that the school board is working on, so it could change. Please be on the lookout for new information next year.
Related follow-up to that?
Yep.
Okay, talking about consistency, do we have reports, information from the other districts, especially the, the large ones? Are they, are we in keeping with the types of cellphone restrictions that they may be putting in?
Do we know?
I don't know. We do know that Mat-Su is piloting a few different kind of interventions within their schools this year, one of them being the yonder pouches, which all students, I think it's at Palmer Middle, come into the school, and they have to put their phones in a pouch for the entire day. I think one of their schools was piloting walkers in classrooms, and so, they were piloting some of these different interventions, I think, prior to writing their policy. But, I'm not aware of the other districts, the other big five districts, considering a new policy at this point in time.
So, I happen to know that Anchorage's cellphone policy, for the entire school day, the cellphones are banned in elementary and middle schools. And then, much like our policy here, will, it allows high schoolers to use their phones during, their policy allows during passing periods and lunch. Ours only has lunch. So, Anchorage allows passing periods. That's what their policy is. I'm not sure what Mat-Su's is at the moment.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Dorn?
Point of information, I know one of the standards was that every classroom has a phone in it, and is that still?
It is, yep.
So, all students would have access to a phone if something needed to be quickly, or?
Mrs. Julian?
Okay, to the, the conversation, I like that we're talking about kind of simplifying things, so, in the AR. And this, this, I think, speaks to the risk of having them allowed at school at any time. So, we say right here, um, and let me get, I'm sorry, let me get to line 50, "Under responsible use guidelines, point one, students will only access and view internet sites suitable for minors as mandated by the Children's Internet Protection Act. Inappropriate contact, content such as obscene, sexually explicit, violent, or drug-related material is strictly prohibited." Okay, but however, a, a lot of, thank you, Dr. Minor, for mentioning apps, and, and how it sends you down rabbit holes. There are many times that students are accessing, and people are accessing apps, and a sexually explicit ad would come on, that they didn't select, okay? That happens. That's going to happen at lunch. What happens to the administrator that sees that student accessing a sexually explicit video that they didn't click on, that was pump, that was, that was just on an ad that flashed on their screen? It's a gray area. I would like, so this, so this would be taken care of. And I, and I do want to say it again, though, because we are looking at, there's eight states, plus the state of New York, the entire state of New York, is looking at doing a bell-to-bell ban on all cellphones, for all grades, for K through 12. We are opening ourselves up, sure, it's, we're, we're, we're putting our toe into the water. I say, jump on in on this. We have the state saying that they want us to do this. That was unanimous support today, too, during the Senate hearing, unanimous support for that. And the amount of people that jumped on to, to co-sign that amendment, it was everybody. So, why not be a leader in the state of Alaska? We, you know, you look at these cellphone bans, I'm, I'm just looking at where I lived for a bit, but the, the Boulder, Colorado School District, which is the number one school district for outcomes in the entire state of Colorado, has a bell-to-bell ban, K through 12. I would, I highly, I think that we are opening ourselves up to a lot of gray area. How, and my question is, how long is lunch for high school students?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. So, in 30 minutes, they go get their cellphone, they're going to be looking at their cellphone, they're going to go get lunch, we then want them to responsibly use their cellphone, put their cellphones back. Why not just give them that time? Give them the gift of freedom, of being free from that darn device. If they choose in those 30 minutes to go off campus, stare at their phones, and do whatever, that's their choice. But, we have the, an opportunity right now to, to take a bold step forward, and reduce the ambiguity that is already in, that's already in this, this, that I think that we're opening ourselves up to.
Sorry, I thought I saw your hand.
I don't know. I would just say, just like we don't want the legislature to give us unfunded mandates, we shouldn't give our administrators and school safeties, what is essentially an unfunded mandate, to police an entire building for cellphone use.
I agree. Mr. Dorn?
Again, I think in terms of lunch, I'm fine with lunch use. And part of it is a trust in students. It has always been an issue that you might go to a website, and a different website comes up, where they think they're going to a right one, and something comes up. And I remember, I know teachers would, you know, as they wander, they monitor what comes up, and I watched a teacher actually in the classroom be able to see whatever came up on a student's computer can show up on theirs, and some are better with that than others, some teachers are better in terms of that type of thing. But, my point is, that if a kid get, got into the wrong, or an unacceptable, I won't say it's the wrong, they got into an inappropriate or unacceptable site, teachers dealt with it as, how did the student deal with it? You know, the student goes, oh, you know, and wow, and they got out right away, it wasn't an issue. If they tried to hide it, and they were, you know, getting, then that, the teacher dealt with it appropriately, and those types of things. And I think that would be the same thing if something came up, and you, you watch dynamics of kids. And if everyone else is, oh, we're, you know, type of thing, then you check it out. And I think kids have been really quite responsive, and again, it's those relationships that staff, and I have to say, I have been so impressed, walking through hallways with the principal at high school level, I mean, at the elementary and middle also, but particularly at high school, where this might be more of an issue, that they're talking to kids by name. They're, and they have worked hard to build relationships, even as, you know, as administrators, where, you know, you've got 800 that you're trying to keep track of. But, building that, and, and so, I have, I have trust in, in our kids also, and that most kids, if you catch them, and they know they're at a lie, they're, they're pretty responsive. And when they're not, which is the exception, then you deal with that. And I think those are the skills and the professionalism that's there. So, so I'm not particularly concerned about that, and I, you know, they are, yes, we have to be alert to these considerations. And I'd say, to the state, if the state does not want to take stand, we do what we, fits our community. And, and I, I do say, this is a great step forward, I think it is beneficial at each level, the elementary, middle, and high. And we can protect kids to a certain limit, but that, a lot of that is also on the parents. And most of the parents are the ones who are paying their bills for the phone. So, how, how they do that, and how we do what we can do in our, in our capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. I'll say, I think it'll be, I know you guys are going to give me the look for this one. I, I actually look forward to the community coming forward with this. I, I hope that there is some good public testimony next Tuesday at our meeting, because it, it really would be interesting and educational to hear what our community's input has to be, parents, and students, teachers, whoever it is that may come forward. I do look forward to their input as we go into the first reading of this. I think that everything that anyone has brought forward tonight has been absolutely valid, and definitely worth consideration. It's definitely a difficult policy to put in place, and we are making big changes. But, I do believe we're making big changes for the betterment of our students. And so, I, I'm very appreciative of where this is going in the conversation tonight. It is 8:10-ish. Is there anything further? I, I, I am willing to work, I just, if there's nothing further, I wouldn't, I don't want to keep people here longer than need be, but if there is, then, and we have amendments or things to add to AR or policy, now would be time to finish bringing them forward. Mr. Dorn?
I just have a quick
Yeah.
informational question. Is Central Council PTA still operational, or?
You're all looking at each other, not that we're aware of, yeah.
Okay, I, COVID changed a lot of things, but I was thinking of PTA, and then I thought of Central Council PTA, as great partners in terms of communicating to parent, from parents to parents, you know, regarding this, so.
Mrs. Hardy?
Along that same veins, though, I do, because I remember watching one on Facebook, our high schools, a lot of them do have a PTA. Could we send this to them, and say, you know, thoughts, feedback, if you feel like providing it?
Mr. Dorn?
I was just going to say, to all the PTAs, yep, but, I mean, definitely the highs, I mean, the, the biggest changes for high school, but the, the others, you know, they can get the ball rolling, and, anyway, they're a partner.
Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing at this time? Really? Truly? All right. Last call, one, two, three, Mr. Dorn?
I just really want to say thank you for, for bearing, I mean, we've had multiple conversations regarding it, and I think the end product is, is laudable. So, thank you very much for.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Totally off-subject. Smoking was banned from California schools in 1986. I didn't even know.
That is crazy, that is crazy.
And nationwide, it was 1994.
So, before we wrap up tonight, I would like to leave the board with this. I was reached out to earlier today, as everyone's aware, the Senate had their vote on HB 57 today, and all but one voted to pass it. And I have been asked to just put it out there to the board, that the ones, you know, it would be really kind, and really maybe appreciated if board members or community members out there sent thank-yous to the senators who voted on HB 57 today, and also, you know, reach out to representatives, as it will make its way to the House. There's some good things in it, and it could get us, maybe not everything we wanted, but a step in the right direction. So, if you're willing, send a thank you. Thank you for your work tonight. Thank you, administration. And with that, we are adjourned.